We're going to go through the Agenda B portion of the meeting for the City Council, Wednesday, October 21st, 2015. We have ordinances on second reading, 501. Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City Department of Federal Department. Can I get some water, please? Thank you. Vehicles and traffic, chapter 1020, handicap parking schedule 40. Parking spaces for handicapped persons, schedule 39. Parking zones for handicapped persons. Add one parking space for handicapped persons at 20 James Street. Add three parking zones for handicapped persons at 161 Lee Avenue, 203 Cowan Street, and 150 Handy Street. 502, orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City Department of Federal Department, vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.16, stopping standing or parking, parking on lawns, areas prohibited. Orders to sit with discussion on first reading, we have none. Resolutions. 548, approve amendments, 539, approve payroll, 550, what rise, refunds or repeat tax sales payments. 551, approve ABC vehicle license review of 2015 and 2016. 552, disposition of charges against Kazabas Incorporated and KJ Tavre vehicle license number 121433034003.
Mr. President, with respect to that matter, the hearing has been adjourned to the next meeting. Wherefore, that resolution will be a resolution carried in the hearing until November 4th, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. 553, approve amendment of resolution R.091560, reason to add new dates in streets, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by Alpha Epsilon Pi International Fraternity. Dates, October 22nd, 27th, 30th, 2015, and February 3rd and 5th, 2015. Times, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. New locations, Huntington Street and Whitehall Street, George Street and Cowan Street, College Avenue and My Street, College Avenue and Huntington Street. 554, approve transfer of taxi license number two, control pay and food 100% to Charbel D. Deo Dei, 50%, Joseph Camer, 50%. 555, approve request for use of city property enclosure of streets requested by New Brunswick Recreation, Ruffey University, location of Uwo Park and Varus Streets. For Big Chill, 5K road race, race lunch, Christmas gift for underprivileged children, food bags, soup kitchens, and feed the hungry program in New Brunswick. Street closures, College Avenue between Marlin and Senior Streets. Dates, Saturday, September 25th, 2015, times, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Park. Street closure, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Police extra duty. 556, approve amendment of resolution R.081532, pay additional legal fees in amount $3,000 502, Lawrence Bitterman, Detective Christopher Borhau in the matter of Rodriguez versus City of New Brunswick, 17, 246, 50, to 20, 748, 50. 557, approve amendment of resolution R.081559, reason date and route change due to Hurricane Joaquin. Approve request for use of city property sidewalks only requested by Goya, galvanizing and organizing youth activism at Rutgers. The location is Lipman Drive and the Lincoln Avenue, to George Street, to Long Street, to Eastern Avenue, to Huntington Street, to College Avenue, to College Avenue Student Center. The 14th Annual Walk for Literacy, dates Saturday, October 17th, 2015. Times, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Not quote unquote. 558, approve request for use of city property requested by a women's worker organization. Location is Miami Square, the Candlelight Mitchell to support the lives of lost ones, God but never forgotten. Dates, Saturday, October 24th, 2015, time is 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. 559, approve water contract with HD Supply Water Works, first order of cold water units, meter, transceiver units and accessories. Specification number 416-5W, not to exceed 178,725. 560, approve authorization advertised, first delivered, one, 2016 Christian transportation vehicle to the police department. Special specification number 490-15P. 561, approve amendment to resolution R.081526, pay additional legal fees in amount $1,0038450 to Lawrence Bitterman, the police officer gangling in the matter of the low senior Valerie versus City of New Brunswick, from 21,663 to 23,047, 50. 562, approve chapter 159 budget insertion, St. New Jersey Office of Homeland Security and Preparedness for FFY15 Urban Area Security Initiative. Amount is $150,000. 563, approve a resolution authorizing establishment of dedication by Ryder, pay expenses for unemployment compensation insurance. 564, approve authorization to rebid, requested by New Brunswick Police Department, first delivered pen chairs, new business expectation, 458, 15P R. 565-
Mr. Council President, we're holding out on this.
We're holding out on this, sir. 565, approve resolution authorizing establishment of dedication by Ryder, uniform fire-
The fire festival, yes.
Obviously, Mr. Council President. We're holding out on this.
We're holding out on this.
5.
I'm sorry.
Holding out on this.
That's very necessary.
So, 64 is still due?
Correct.
566, approve amendment of resolution R.011543, increase the number of tax appeals in amount of $10,000, Oland Longwood, Moran Guns and Dukes LLC for special counsel for tax appeals. Division of section from $50,000 to $60,000. 567, approve amendment of resolution R.011546, reason for providing inspection services for added assessments and related replacements, costing as needed in amount of $5,000 with Realty Appraisal Co. for 2015 property inspection services, division of assessments from $10,000 to $15,000. 568, approve amendment of resolution R.011551, provide additional design and construction related services in 2015 in amount of $20,000 with Hatch Motte and Ballow, Inc., doing business as Hatch Motte and Ballow LLC. For 2015 engineering evidence support services for the water utility, not to exceed $20,000. 569, authorize leasing copy machine for the water utility, water treatment plant, with GE Capital Information Tech Slus including us as Rico USA, the one Rico MP2554, SP Digital Copyer System, not to exceed 8092 per month, commence on November 1st, 2015, and end on October 31st, 2019. 48-month contract, state contract A, 82709, New Jersey cost per copy, copyer slash N0053. 570, approve award of contract of JP Smith Contracts Incorporated for membrane tank coating for the water utility, specification number 459-15W, not to exceed 186,000. 571, authorize purchase by the police department under Cranford Police Property Protection System, identifier 47CP CPS, from Celebrity of Mars County LLC, doing business in fire pressure G dot for two, 2016 Dodge Grago, not to exceed 58,932. 572, held for the question of purchasing nature. 573, approve amendment of resolution R.051356, pay copy, coverage, charges in amount of $1,015,14, to fire departments digital copying. With GE Capital Information Tech Slus, doing business as Rico USA Corporation, not to exceed 1,015,40. Approve role of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more than original contract. 574, approve amendment of resolution R.011451, reason for 2014 municipal order, 2015 bond sale and bond anticipation note sales in amount of 85,720 for the finance department, Samuel Clone Company from municipal order 2014, not to exceed 85,720. 575, approve request for use of city property and street closure for meters each operation, requested by the restaurant job, location Miami Square Park. Welcome to the year 2016, fireworks be shot up to the hunk of the bell. DJ entertainment at the show movie. Street closure, Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets, George Street between Lydian and New Streets, date Thursday, December 31st, 2015, and Friday, January 1st, 2016. Time, 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Street closure, 6:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. Police extra duty. 576, approve purchase by police department under state contract A, 89851, software license and related service slash N0003, from She or Shy International Corporation for software maintenance and support, not to exceed 90552. 577, approve purchase by police department under state contract A, 83924, from wireless electronics incorporated, doing business as Wireless Communications and Electronics for equipment maintenance and repairs, not to exceed 5,000, 49360. 578, approve payment of special public assistance service to James M. R. LLC, not to exceed 2815. 579, approve relaxation of student doors orders requested by Recon Services LLC. Catch up with work schedule at the Morel Street Student House, page 2 at 65 Morel Street, date Saturday, Saturday is October 24th, 2015, December 26th, 2015, holidays excluded. Time, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 580, approve relaxation of student doors orders requested by NACI Contractors Corporation. Repair existing retaining wall, Pilgrim Square, 100 Albany Street, slash 65 Church Street, date Saturday, October 17th, 2015, not quote unquote, December 19th, 2015, holidays excluded. Time, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. 581, held for your request of the city attorney. 582, approve authorization advertised for 2015 sanitary sources improvements, contracts two slash A and two B, specification number 895-15, not quote unquote. 583, authorize tax code to transfer several grants on tax and utility accounts. 584, authorize fund for Schnett Louvre LLC under the Fulton Gardens Associates against Block 300, Block 2. 280 Fulton Street, due to tax court judgment. 585, approve authorization advertised, Route 18 Fire Hydrant, new location for the water utility, specification number 491-15W. 586, devising consent to the board of events appointment, we're also holding out on this. Thank you, first police department, all, for our committee.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Egan.
Yes, here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Means Act have been complied with and satisfied by adding notice, which gave sufficient notice of time and place and conduct of all public means of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, as invited to City Club, and been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Please stand and pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for our men and women who served in our armed forces and had lost their lives. We have minutes from September 16th, 2015. Can I have the motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. D public hearing has been removed after through a very intensive November 4th, 10/16. Thank you. We have ordinances on second reading, 501. Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City Department of Federal Department, vehicles and traffic, chapters 10.20, handicap parking, schedule 40. Parking spaces for handicapped persons, schedule 39. Parking zones for handicapped persons. Add one parking space for handicapped persons at 20 James Street. Add three parking zones for handicapped persons at 161 Lee Avenue, 203 Cowan Street, and 150 Handy Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on some particular ordinance? Seeing done?
Who's the ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We have resolutions? Also. Also, I said. 502, orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.16, stopping standing and parking, parking on lawns, areas prohibited. Would anybody from the public like to comment on some particular ordinance? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Charles Cradville, Ward 2, New Brunswick. Can you tell me why you're passing this ordinance?
Why are we passing this ordinance?
Yes.
Because I believe you don't want people parking on their lawns. Can anybody elaborate for?
Well, the ordinance has been on the books for many years. Recently, recent, but we were challenged on the language in the ordinance relative to the enforcement by way of appeal. And it was determined as a result of the appeal that the judge felt that the language that used to be in the ordinance, which basically said, "No parking shall be permitted on the grass or dirt areas of the property," was too vague. The intent of the ordinance was upheld by the court, but he felt the language was too vague, too vague in that regard. So, the amendment specifically provides that no person shall park or no property owner shall allow to be parked, which clarifies the ordinance for purposes of the actor that may be charged with a violation. But the actual ordinance has been on the books for many, many years.
So, this is just a new version?
Correct.
Can you tell me what judge threw out the old law?
It was Judge Reavis, Superior Court, after an appeal from a conviction in the Michigan Court.
Okay, and can you tell me the case, the person who appealed?
John Iacona and Rutgers University.
So, it's Iacona?
And Rutgers University.
And Rutgers.
Oh, Rutgers.
Two people.
There were two cases that were taken up on appeal, and they were consolidated for purposes of appeal.
So, the city was trying to give Rutgers a ticket for parking on lawns?
I believe it was a Rutgers-owned property.
Really? That's interesting. Yeah, is anybody clamoring for this ordinance, or is it just the city? Yes, okay, so, so, have residents come to you and said, "Can you pass this," or is this something that law can park at once and?
Mr. Shannon.
I could tell you that over my years of being involved in the city, we've received numerous calls to the city attorney's office, and I know that this gate and handling property maintenance issues have received complaints from residents who say that people are parking their vehicles on the grass, on unapproved surfaces, and that's not permitted, obviously, under the ordinance, and it makes for an unsightly, unsightly result. Lawns get torn up and things of that nature.
Okay. Well, I don't want to belabor the point, but I understand that, you know, some people might be concerned about this issue. You know, ultimately, it amounts to a relatively minor issue of the issue of something, you know, unsightly that people might have to look at and not like to. I, you know, remind you that dozens, if not hundreds, of people have come to your meetings and encourage you to pass a paid sick leave ordinance. Other towns have passed it, there is a model that exists, it is crystal clear. If you have questions, there's people that will answer them.
How do we get from parking on lawns to paid sick leave?
I, I, I'm just trying to make a point here.
You have to do it, you have to bring it in.
I have to, I have to. Because, because a lot of people care about this. And actually, more than 1,000 who signed that petition for you. So, I would say, if you've got time to work on this, you know, the ordinance to make sure you can ticket people who park on unapproved surfaces, you probably should rethink your priorities, or at least, at the next meeting, please, can you introduce a paid sick leave ordinance for New Brunswick?
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Can you, please?
Thank you.
Will you at the next meeting?
Mr. Cradville, come on, buddy. Please. We'll talk about that in the open room. We have resolutions. I'm sorry, we didn't vote. Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing done?
So, who?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We now have resolutions, 548 to 58, 586. 552 is a resolution now to carry to the next meeting.
Correct.
We are voting, 572, 581, 565, and 586.
565, you didn't say that.
I said that. It's okay. Would anybody from the public like to comment on a particular resolutions, please? I'm a resolution zone, sir. 5 minute rule, sir, Mr. Cradville, please.
Thank you, again, Charles Cradville. I'm going to be as quick as possible, I'm going to start on page four. I just want to say that, you know, there's a lot of resolutions here, and to fit it all in in five minutes is asking a lot, so I hope you'll show some discretion, and if you can. I had to inform the Mets are playing tonight, so I'll keep that in mind. Page four, the prisoner transportation vehicle, is there an issue that we have so many prisoners and not enough vehicles to transport them? Why do we need another vehicle specifically for prisoner transportation?
Captain Miller, can you help us with that, please?
We've had a prisoner transportation vehicle in one way or another for 22 years I've been here, and the one we have now is outdated and it takes a year's place.
We transferred prisoners from here maybe down to the county?
The warehouse, County Jail, yeah.
So, I've been informed by Captain Miller, is this like a ban? Is this going to replace number 947? Is that the, is that what we're talking about?
Will this replace ban number 947, Captain?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there approximately how many people will see during? I think he said he's not sure yet.
This is just, just advertised, we're not at that part yet.
Okay. So, is it 16 passenger or 12 passengers?
No, it's going to be, you know, banned, and then it has to be retrofitted, so running out who bids and what they could do.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a bust if you move to two of your original.
Okay, good, good. 63, ends in 63, number 16. Resolution authorizing establishment of a dedication by Ryder, where's that?
Mr. Rockland?
I'm going to ask Mr. President.
No problem.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Council President, the fiscal affairs law allows us to set up trust funds, and in those trust funds, and the various recreation trust funds, developer escrow trust funds, police extra duty trust funds, there are a number of different trust funds that can be established. And they should be authorized by the Division of Local Government Services. So, throughout the audit, in the audit process over the years, at times, people come up, or audit findings are that we haven't gotten permission on certain trust funds. The trust funds exist, they've been on the books, and every year, we kind of go through the process of looking at some of those trust funds to see, and going through the process of getting approved.
Thank you.
And that's what we're doing here, is just officially authorizing a trust fund that's been established for more than 20, 25 years.
Thank you, sir.
Right, and can I ask about, or well, I guess I'll move on to the very next one. 10 chairs. This is a, why do we have to rebid, first of all?
No, we'll bid the first part.
No, we'll bid. So, so, this is interesting. The New Brunswick Police Department needs 10 chairs, and it's going through a public bidding process, which I think is, you know?
That's the law, they ask the market.
I guess so, but isn't it, isn't it amazing to you that something like, as important as like hiring a lawyer, who would make thousands of dollars, you don't need to use a public bidding process, but for the police department to buy 10 chairs?
That's the way the law is made for professional services, they can hire whoever they want for things like, nothing, things they have to draw the bid, that's the statute, that's the law of St. New Jersey.
Yeah, do you think it's a good law? Do you think it should be changed? I mean, doesn't that, doesn't that strike you as really amazing? There's so many things that don't end up on your agenda because it doesn't require a bidding process.
I understand your point, sir.
Can I ask about the next one? The, the, I understand it's being pulled, but the uniform fire safety penalty money?
Well, if we pulled it, then we were not going to be speaking about it. But when we have it on the agenda, we're glad to talk about it.
But I heard it's going to be pulled for out. Is that, is that, it's never going to be passed. Is that right?
Correct.
It has been pulled, it's unnecessary.
It's unnecessary.
It had been authorized previously, and the public affairs office did not pick up on that, it was authorized in 1988.
September 12th, 1988.
Really? So, this has nothing to do with the ordinance that was passed at the last meeting? Or would, is it?
That penalty money may possibly end up in this trust fund, but getting DLGS's Division of Local Government Services authorization, number 1988.
Okay, and I'm very concerned about that ordinance that was passed at the last meeting. You know, I didn't, I didn't really understand it at the time, and I don't know if you did, but I want to bring it to your attention, because this is a very serious issue. Is it true that the small business community in New Brunswick is going to be charged fees, even if they don't own their buildings? So, if you're, if the local store is inspected under this new law, they're going to?
Please tell us out, give you as much time as you want, let's stick to the resolutions. When we get to the public portion of the meeting, you can speak about it.
Okay, I'll save it.
Let's just stick to the, to the script.
I'll save it, it's just been really bothering me. I'll move on, next one. The number 20, 2015 property inspection services, who's this company, Realty Appraisal, and why is the thing modified? 567 are the last two digits.
567.
Page five.
Mr. Shannon, can you talk to me about that, please?
Yeah, there's a lot of large new buildings in the city this year, so the, the initial estimate for the contract needed to be increased, the building for these services needed to be increased in terms of the cost of having inspections and placement costs in the city.
So, they provide services that are on top of what the city's staff of housing inspectors do? Is this a different type of inspection?
This is for the assessors office, this is inspections for assessment purposes.
This is on properties, sir.
We don't have a full-time, part-time property inspector, it's in the assessors division.
Do you use this company?
Yeah. That helps us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
The next one is Hatch Motte McDonald, another $20,000. Can you tell me why, what that additional money is for?
Is he working here?
No, he's not, he's in Atlantic City.
Can you mention?
Yes. The Hatch Motte is retained on an annual basis, and this is the annual consultant contract. They put in more hours in time related to the upgrade of the gravity filters, we've talked about them from time to time. We charge their time off when they, against this contract, when we installed the second generation of the water treatment plant. They've helped us design a, a specification for recoding the four membrane tanks, you'll see that in this item 23. The point of the matter is, is that they ate more of the contract up with this additional work. We still have dam inspection work to do, to be done before the end of the year. At this point, we think it's necessary to amend the contract by $20,000.
Thank you, Mr. Rockland.
Thank you, so maybe even more over, over the course of the year?
Possibility.
Okay. I want to move on to that membrane tank coating. Can you tell me how many bids you got on that?
Four bids.
Four bids, and was this the lowest bid?
Yes, it was.
Number 27 into 574, the, what is this, yeah?
We have additional work that Samuel Clone did with regards to the bond sale, and also the ban sale that we had earlier this year. In addition, we've, we've modified how we're looking to pay them. Actually, in the past, we considered the response, the hourly rate of response sufficient to actually make the payment. The purchasing agent and I have kind of gone through this, and we've kind of cleaned this up, and in the future, any, any request for proposals will spell out a lot more of these additional services upfront, so we shouldn't have to come back to the council afterwards. But this was actually for review of some of the federal grants, as I said, the bond and ban sale, review of the annual financial statement, review of the annual debt statement, as well as assistance during the budget preparation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Forgive me, I want to learn, and I don't know. What is a ban sale?
The bond anticipation note.
Bond, okay, sorry, anticipation note. And so, this, this is an additional $85,000, can you tell me what's the value of the contract originally?
I think it was about $125,000.
Okay, so it's a substantial increase. And can you tell me, does any of this have to do with the problems with the police officers and their ticket books?
Did they have to do with that? No, Mr. Cradville, no.
Can I just ask why, why certain things are being held, like the crosswalk improvements?
Well, because some things are held because they need, or they don't have all the information they need to pass.
Crosswalk improvements, why not?
Mr. Cradville, why, we're not going to here to talk about why things are held, let's move on.
I'm serious, crosswalk safety.
I'm serious, sir.
This isn't a court, can you just tell me why, why it's being held?
Tell me, sir, what's on that, Mr. Council President? What's the clarification on the actual dates of the day that we need to make, we need to get it out of the time. We need, we are, we-
Like I said, sir, they need more information.
I just think we, we deserve that information, uh, you know, deserve the information about why it's being held, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, I'm almost done, number, it ends at five eighty-five. Route eighteen, fire hydrant group location, seems, ever since I've been here, Route eighteen's been under construction. Why is the fire hydrant station moving now?
Uh, there is some relocation work going on right now with hydrants. In fact, there were three of them, uh, just recently replaced to accommodate the changes that the DOT is making at the intersection of eighteen and Route one. Um, obviously, that project's been under construction, it seems like a year and a half, maybe two years now. They are adjusting, um, at least one of the ramps, um, eighteen northbound to Route one southbound. The geometry of that ramp's being changed, um, we have had to repair, um, some hydrants because during the fifth, final completion of this ramp work, we're gonna be doing some hydrant-to-hydrant, um, pushing of water into Rutgers Village. This particular one, and we're doing that work right now under the annual contract we have with B and W. This one here, number thirty-eight, is a hydrant, uh, that was installed adjacent to Raritan Gardens. It's, um, close to their, um, noise wall, uh, the water utility finds it in harm's way, it's been hit once before. I think we got a proposal for thirty-nine thousand dollars to replace it. That value will far exceed the remaining, uh, value of the annual contract with B and W, so the appropriate thing to do is to bid.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the thorough explanation, I, I also want to ask about the next one. Uh, why is that being held, the appointment to the ethics board?
Just like I told you before, we just kind of need some more information. Okay?
Oh, the council wanted more information.
I'm, I'm, what do you mean?
Well, just usually it says who pulled it, and here it doesn't say who pulled it, so I just...
Uh, we need some more information on it.
By "we," you mean the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the resolutions?
Yes, my name is Danielle Moore, one eighty-eight Rutherford Street. Normally, I don't pull up the comment resolutions, but, uh, resolution five eighty-one, approve for crosswalk safety improvements. I would like to know, is Joyce Comer and Handy Street gonna be done, and, and is this what this is being approved for?
This was held, you see that, we held it?
So what walkways are, are you talking about improvement? It's been two and a half months ago where you said that you were gonna take care of Joyce Comer and Handy. I would like to know, for, for crosswalk safety, what improvements are you gonna be doing, and where are they?
We're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna speak about things that are being held, being held right now. You want to go up and ask somebody later on, like, streets are being included in it? Right now, it's not...
But what is, what, what is it being approved for, what do you, what, what?
We're not approving it, we're holding it, did you read the first sentence?
No, I didn't, okay, and, and like I said, I'm...
Well, we'll, we'll, after, somebody will get you the streets, so you know, after the meeting, please, we get you the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Seeing done?
With the resolutions.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Essler?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Will now move to the public portion of the meeting? Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, in fact, the discussion of the, uh, I'm sorry. Discussion of the CY twenty-fifteen best practices in New York?
Yes, every year, um, the Division Local Government Service sends a questionnaire, a fifty, fifty-question questionnaire, um, to every municipality, um, in New Jersey, um, and, based on your answers to the best practices, as the, uh, as administration entrenched views best practices, you may have, uh, some of your state aid at risk. We have filed the questionnaire, um, last week, um, we are, um, I'm not sure, I believe a packet, a copy of the questionnaire is in your packet, our answers to it. Um, we are not losing aid, we answered enough yes questions and are not losing any aid. We're obligated to, um, at least discuss the matter at a council meeting, you know, in, in, in addition to filing the matter with the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to the public portion of the meeting, if anybody would like to address the council, please do so. Name and address, please, you have five minutes to address the council.
Danielle Moore, one eighty-eight Rutherford Street, so, like, getting, getting back to Handy Street and Joyce Comer, when does the city plan on redoing it? It's been two and a half months since the city said about doing it.
Who can talk to the Mr. Lachlan?
I think, currently, we've just filed for municipal aid grants for the state, uh, the two projects that were, uh, of the two projects, the, uh, Joyce Comer Avenue from Handy Street to Patterson is under request in the state for municipal funding for that.
Okay, thank you.
In the works.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and then also, that's the light for the crosswalk on Joyce Comer and Delavan, what we mentioned at the last meeting, were not working?
Yes, uh, we were talking, uh, I know, we had some discussion, I spoke to the administrator, and he made some, I believe, some recommendations, uh, Mr. Lachlan, want to speak about that?
Well, that one, I'm not sure of, but I was speaking to you about, um, I think, Mrs., um, Ms. Moore's, excuse me, um, pictures that she put on disc for some of the council members.
Well, no, that's, that's with Livingston and Delavan, we'll get to that.
Uh, I'm answering this gentleman's question, um, so, I'm gonna ask the engineering department what they have done to repair the, um, crosswalk that Ms. Moore's referring to.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, we recently had Orchard Holden's come in, who's our contractor, for a number of the lighted crosswalks, including the radar stations, they did a comprehensive review of all locations. We've received estimates from them, the estimates were far exceeded, uh, what are available budgets, so we've asked them to pri, break down the estimate, so we can prioritize repair reach. Uh, we, once we have that estimate back, and then we can, under the existing contract, facilitate one of the repairs, we'll do so, we'll make Delavan and Joyce Comer priorities.
So we can take, they contacted the electrical contractor, and they're, they're getting bids now to, uh, do the work, man, to fix the, the crosswalk later.
Okay, now, the other one, that's where, a few weeks ago, that's with the, no left turn on Delavan Street. Uh, I went to the, the Board, uh, Board of Education meeting last night, that was another new thing, like, due to where, hopefully, the city and the Board of Education, where I gave you, I brought this down for, for you, over two hundred pictures to show.
I think three hundred.
Well, two hundred, three hundred, but, I know I gave enough for you to show the example, due to where, uh, how dangerous it is on Livingston and Delavan to make that left turn. How, I pray, the, why, why the crossing guards, they're so scary, even with two, uh, two crossing guards there. So, that's where I spoke to, and I showed, okay, the way you have Comstock in Livingston Avenue, where it said, where it's blocked for, uh, buses only, hope you can do the same thing for Livingston and Delavan with the help of the security guards, like they do for Comstock Street.
So after review of your pictures, man, that you sent in, Mr. Lachlan, that, I believe, he contacted the police department, and they're going to look into, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, better for Delavan Street, that left turn, so now, they're gonna take a look at it.
Maybe just like we're active when the school lets out just for about twenty minutes or so, due to where that's where all the kids, like I said, what, you have two schools releasing at the same time, and, like I said, due, what, due to where two crossing guards, the way you cross four different ways, you cross a child this way, you gotta run over, hurry up this way, so it don't get hit this way, this way.
We, we get it.
Well, oh, oh, okay, so I hope to see something soon, like I said, the Board of Education, I gave him the, the, uh, pictures and CDs last night at the meeting, too. Okay, and much...
No, just that I asked the police department to just look into whether or not there's an appropriate number of crossing guards at that intersection, and, you know, most of all of Ms. Moore's, uh, pictures, there are at least, uh, two crossing guards, uh, very active at that location. Um, and I would tell you, my personal opinion, I don't think it's unreasonable to, um, prevent left turns off of Livingston onto Delavan during at least school dismissal. It's very, um, it's very busy, um, during dismissal, and I, one of the pictures Ms. Moore gave us was a picture of a, a very large dump truck making a left turn, I assumed because they didn't want to sit in traffic. And I bet you that makes the intersection very complicated.
So he's even thinking, or even thinking about taking a look at, that school dismissal time, no left turn on Delavan Street, that would certainly help, I believe, so that would be not a problem, anybody making a left there. So we're gonna take a look at that.
Okay, thank you very much, now, one, one, uh, new, new thing, that's where, who do you call for down, down wires?
Down wa, what type of wires?
Well, wires that are hanging, hanging down.
Uh, well, you get the, you get the, if you find out what pole they're on, you get the pole number, and I believe you can call the police department, is that correct?
A wire comes down, it's always a potential of danger, so, oh, the police department will come out, with the fire department, close up any roads that are necessary, then, you can contact public service.
And then they get the number, every, every pole has a number on it, the police will contact public service or the utility, which utility needs to come out?
Believe me, I'm familiar with it, believe me, and that's one of the ones I'm saying, due to where I see two late locations, right around Livingston School, with the wires been down over two months, and wow, honestly, it brings memories back to me, where, wow, I know what it's like to be passing through in the, uh, at evening, and get tangled up into a wi, all these wires that are hanging down. And like I said, I surely see enough going around Livingston School that hasn't been taken care of, and pray that it doesn't happen to no one else again.
Okay, so, if you, like I said, you sit in, contact the police, and they'll come out there, and they'll contact the utility.
And then that's where I spoke to you, does the city have authority to speak to Verizon about their, their material, their wires?
What do you mean, their wires?
Due to, due to where with this new wireless system, mainly in apartment, like, big complexes, where I have the pictures to show you these new boxes that they're putting, where they say caution, caution, but why are they putting them so low down, where a child can just go right over to touch it?
Well, I mean, caution to me, they don't want you to dig around it, I mean, you know, they need to run away near it. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't believe it's life threatening.
Uh-huh, believe me, you can't say it's life threatening, like I said, what, I've been suffering thirteen years, what, because of Verizon and their wires. So believe me, any, any type of wire can be serious, mainly to a child, if it is to an adult.
Well, we, we certainly don't have any control on, uh, Verizon, on having to do your work.
Well, like I said, I have the pictures right here to show Verizon, caution, caution, but like I said, uh, here, I'll hand them to you, where, if this, this low, where, like I said, a child can come touch it. Any type of wires are caution.
You can touch the box or touch the wire?
Yeah, you can touch the wires in the box, this is how low they are, where they're putting them, it's on apartment complexes, where, where you have wireless internet inside the buildings. There's even a couple of them on Drift Street, I, I get a chance to...
We'll start to see, we'll look at your pictures, and we'll see if somebody can contact somebody.
And I've been seeing a, a lot of them, like I said, due to where, with the Verizon and their wires, and I can see too much danger, and, like I said, I hope the city will speak up to them, not regards to just my case, but like I said, money doesn't take away pain, but I, I will say, uh, for someone else's safety, than having too many of their wires down. So I hope the city does look into it, and having them put their internet boxes in a safer situation where a ch, a child or anyone cannot just go over to touch it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anybody? Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening, once again, Charles Crandeville, War Two New Brunswick, I gotta ask about the ordinance you passed at the last meeting, uh, is it true that the fees, the new fees for inspections are gonna be paid by the tenants of commercial and industrial buildings? Basically, the, the business owners, as opposed to the landlords?
Mr. Chan?
Well, that's how the firm operates, with respect to a commercial tenant, see, a commercial operator who wants to get CO, um, a bit pays, pays the fees. So it is now, with respect to other, to, to commercial, um, Rutherford, I'll give you the question twice. But the odds here are, we...
And that's correct? Yes. That's correct, uh, the tenants will pay that, to the commercial agents, and the multiple dwellings will be the owner of the building.
Right, right, and so, um, that's normal, but are there any normal, uh, fees like that that are recurring? Like, this is annual, right, every year, the, the businesses are gonna have to pay, and the rest of them? Is there any other fee like that, that they currently have?
Well, well, this, these are non-life hazard businesses, like I said at the last time, so, the other businesses that pay a fee to the state, they do that every year, too, so, it's no different. These are just non-life hazard fees that are, that are attached to, these businesses do have, or they would pay a fee to the state, we don't want to do any inspection for that, they pay, the business owner pays, not, not the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Right, these businesses are not life hazard, hazard buildings?
But they still need to be inspected, they're no different than any, anything else, they could go out of fire, and it doesn't make it any different than any other property.
Did the city consult any people who were gonna be affected by this, the Chamber of Commerce, or any of the, uh, you know? Any of their representatives, no? Any, any landlords, any small businesses?
Not that I know, sir.
No, okay, you just passed it. Um, I don't know, I just say, it seems concerning to me, where is the money gonna go to?
Where's the money go to? Or goes into, uh, the bank, I guess.
From the general fund. Sorry? It goes into the general fund, it's not dedicated to the fire, it's not dedicated to the fire department.
Okay, I'm, I'm surprised you passed the ordinance without knowing how many buildings would be affected, or, uh, how much money the city was gonna make off of it. Is, has anybody looked into that since then? Does anybody know how many buildings will be affected, or how much money the city is expecting to make?
We won't know until a year.
There's really no prediction of how much money is gonna be made, I don't know.
I can't tell you that.
Nothing.
Okay, or of how many buildings, approximately, are gonna be affected?
Not at this time, sir, this time.
Okay, so that's...
This is not uncommon, a lot of other fire departments throughout the state, charge fees for non-life hazard uses.
Okay, are the, uh, so that's helpful, would, can you name some of the other towns that do this, are the fees comfortable?
Charlie Doolittle, yeah, I think Franklin does it.
Franklin?
I think Franklin does it.
How do our fees compare to theirs?
They're relative.
So, about the same?
No, we're not.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, this, this is kind of surprising, uh, can you tell me, when was this ordinance posted on the city website?
When is it, we passed that two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Now is it put on the website? I, I, Mr. Tereski?
Okay, ordinances are, are not required to be published on the city website, we publish them most of the time. For this particular ordinance, it was not published, but we like to publish it, we try to publish the ordinance, the, uh, Friday before the council meeting.
And when, when was this one published?
I, I don't know, man.
Was it before or after the meeting where it was adopted?
I don't remember the date.
You have to recall, we'll, we'll, you can get the information for you.
Okay, I'm, I'm aware it's not a legal requirement, but a lot of people use the city website to find out what's going on, and that would be another concerning element of this, that it wasn't posted, uh, like other ordinances are, and that, you know, there aren't predictions about how many people will be affected, or how much money's gonna be made. Um, there's really a lot of irregularities and things that are unclear here, so even if this is something that other towns do, the method by which New Brunswick is implementing it is, uh, sending up some red flags for me, and I think you should, uh, look into that, and maybe think twice about that. I, I'm also very curious of why the resolution was hold, that was supposed to determine where the money goes. That seems like, uh...
It was deemed unnecessary.
Right, but obviously, at some point, it was deemed necessary before that, if it was already drafted, and I have a copy of it.
I don't have an answer to that.
So I'm just, I, it's, I'm just saying, these things are concerning to me, that there's not easy answers to these questions, and I would... Like, maybe, is there anybody who can speak to these concerns?
What's the concern?
It's unnecessary.
What's the concern?
Yes, Mr. Franklin.
No. Penalty money's going to a separate fund for the fire department, so, those are dedicated money, they just go right into a separate account. These monies are just like smoke detectors, inspections, and, and other fees, even the reg, even the life hazard registration fees go into a general fund for the city. So if you didn't do what we asked you to do, we penalize you, that penalty money goes into a special fund that comes back, just dedicated to the fire department.
So, uh, penalty, this is penalty money, it's different than the fee money?
Correct.
Thank you, so the penalty money, um, it's gonna be put in a special fund for the fire department, so, people who, what, what would an example of penalty be, if you, uh, don't pay the fee, or is it, you, you failed the inspection? Or both?
What's an example of a penalty?
Uh, maybe block depresses, you know, whatever they, you know, they, they, in friendly fashion, whatever extensions that we give, they don't, then they get a penalty, and that penalty fee will go into this fund.
Right, and so, uh, so you're not gonna be doing any more inspections than, than you, than you worked before. This is, the same number of inspections are gonna be done, so presumably, you're still gonna, it's not gonna be any more money coming into this fund, right?
Into the penalty fund?
Yeah.
Penalty fund varies a year, it's not a guaranteed one, it's not a guarantee.
I thought, how many penalties?
And the, the fee money's gonna go to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up, I had a lot, I had a lot of questions, I'm gonna move on to the next topic. Um, speaking of inspections, when was the last time One Spring Street was inspected?
Somebody here, yes, sir.
What type of inspection?
What type of inspection are you speaking of, sir?
Uh, I don't, I don't know the different types, I guess, fire, safety, housing...
I did a fire inspection earlier this year in the past, I had some issues, and then it passed.
You did a fire inspection this year, sir?
And you went, and I heard there's something about issues, there were issues in the past?
I, I can't recall, they might have one or two. I can't recall, they might have had more too, maybe minor things.
One or two minor things in the city inspection, maybe fire safety.
Did they rectify them, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
What other types of inspections might be done, there housing inspections, is that?
What other type of inspections do we do for one Spring Street?
They might do a three-year inspection on that.
Who's that?
From the housing inspectors.
Oh, the city?
I'm not going to the to the units like the economy area.
Okay, but the city, housing inspectors every three years would inspect, and does anybody know when the last time it happened?
It should.
Can you answer to that question? We'll get the information for you, we don't have tonight, we're dead free.
Okay, can somebody tell me uh, you know, just what what happened there this weekend?
Yes, sir, the fire department restored everything.
So I went back today and uh the night that it happened, uh one of my inspectors went out, a woman got burned on her feet. The steam pipe had broke inside the ceiling of the sixth floor. All right, uh steam shut off the fire alarm, fire department went. Woman got burned, she hesitated coming out of the building, because all the steam was coming out, it looked like smoke to her. And she kind of hesitated a little bit, by that time water had caught up. A little high, and when she walked through, she burned her feet, she got second degree burns on her feet. According to the the management today, it didn't explode, what happened was they are putting in shut-off valves for the steam for per floor, so they can shut each floor, but they need to shut the floor up for the steam. There's a coupling that goes on that valve, the coupling failed, and that's what that's what happened.
Thank you, sir.
So, is this the first time something like this has happened at Spring Street?
Is that the first time?
Yeah.
I I don't know.
Do you know the answer? I'm just, I'm taking a guessing right now, I'll throw it out.
People told me that it's not the first time, but I wanna get confirmation from people who are in charge of inspecting.
Would anybody know, would anybody, yes, sir?
I know, I don't know if it was this year or last year, I know they had another water leak.
Water leak?
Yeah, not from this spring, probably from the whatever, whatever it was.
My sewer was backed up next week at my house. I hate, I hate when that happens.
Yeah, I know, but you were, you were, you didn't get second degree burns.
I understand.
So this is a very serious incident.
I'd say it wasn't serious, but I'm just saying that, you know, uh we don't know if it ever happened before, describing.
I got you, so um I I'm terribly concerned about the situation. And I wanna know um what the city is gonna do.
Mr. Cradaville, I don't understand your point, accidents and things happen in buildings, just turn the news on, I mean, I I'm sure that one Spring Street doesn't want their coupling not to work. Uh, I mean, you know, like I said, my sewer backed up the other day, I mean, no one got hurt, like it cost me some money to fix it wherever, you know, that I had. And everybody has their own individual story of what happens at their houses or in wherever they live. So I don't even, what what are you getting to here?
Well, I mean, to be fair, your house is not a redevelopment project that the city in New Brunswick has sponsored and given a tax abatement to. This is a, this is a project that the city has has given a thirty-year tax exemption to, and uh.
What does that mean, that they can't have accidents and the lights can't go out and you can't uh, you can't have a faulty whatever, because they gotta, I don't think one or two of them notice, Cradaville. I don't see your, see your theory there, you know, that the the coupling they got from Aaron Supply of the out on twenty-seven is now tied into them getting a thirty-year tax abatement. But that's how your mind works, I guess, but I I don't understand how those two things are, anyway, nothing. Things happen. They're good, we wish nobody would get hurt, but I I mean, they happen all over the place, they never do. So I don't understand why you think that, you know, you was, you know, picking on this house.
Well, I I'll tell you why. Because uh there used to be eighty-six public parking spaces on that block. And the New Brunswick Parking Authority uh in a favorable deal gave that money to the developer to help them build their their building. In addition, the city gave a favorable agreement to totally pay, uh you know, less money in taxes than they normally would, um the pilot agreement. And I don't know if you noticed, but that block, Church Street, Spring Street, all the businesses there have suffered terribly. And 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 have all changed owners or names many times since I've been here, I've only been here eleven years now in New Brunswick, and I've seen.
I think it's eleven years, twenty-six years, and thirty-one.
And I I've just seen a lot of places struggle to survive there.
Can you believe that's because of Spring Street, the developer on Spring Street?
I believe that the developer had promised to provide metered public parking, short-term parking in the in the facility. And that was part of the deal with the NVPA to get their way. And for one reason or another, the NVPA, the Borai Development Company, came to an agreement that this wasn't gonna work out there, and they were gonna come up with a different arrangement. And here we are, uh it's still very hard to park there, they have a huge parking garage that has vacancies in it. The uh there are problems with the concrete balconies in the building that are costing the homeowners there a lot of money. And there are now problems with uh, you know, faulty plumbing, faulty steam pipes that are, where people are being burned and injured in this building that's only nine years old. And that is why I'm concerned about this, because the city has invested to make this a reality, and it's turning out to be a nightmare. And not only that, but the city has went ahead and given another tax exemption for another building by the same developer, and the state has given them federal Hurricane Sandy money to build that one. So I'm concerned that maybe.
They gave them a lot more than the city could give them.
Well, yeah, and I'm saying, who is, who's watching, who's taking care of this, when, you know, like are are the buildings being inspected, are they keeping their agreements? Uh let's, for example, there was a tax abatement agreement the city approved in two thousand and three to make the building, uh you know, I'm sure the developers said they needed it to make the building a viable thing, they got it. City Council passed it, it was before, maybe Councilwoman Arlo, I use only council, I don't recall, but um that agreement, uh the building was built three years later, opened three years later. But the agreement was amended in two thousand and nine. Um, and I wanna know what changed in that amendment, why was it done? I've been told that uh it was because the building didn't have as much commercial space as it originally was going to. And so my question then would be, wouldn't that be something you would know at least by two thousand and six? Why did it take another three years for the city if the if if the agreement was not just, if the agreement was not fair? If the agreement did not, uh if 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 the developer wasn't providing what they set forth in the original agreement, why were they allowed to continue to reap the benefits of a tax tax exemption without the uh uh city intervening and saying, you're violating the agreement we had? If they were in violation of the agreement, why was that situation allowed to continue all the way until two thousand and nine, and the agreement changed?
Why were you violating the agreement?
Well, uh like I mentioned, the parking issue might have been something that was in the original agreement, I haven't seen the original agreement. But certainly, there was an agreement about how much commercial space they were gonna build, how much residential space they were gonna build. And what I've been told is that the agreement had to be changed because they didn't have as much commercial space as they said they were gonna build.
Is that true?
So why wasn't that addressed right away?
Mr. Council, the original abatement agreement was approved before the project went and got their final site plan approval. The time it went and got its final site plan approval, the size of the commercial space, the office and the retail there was less than what had been anticipated when they were originally doing the the abatement. The Borais came back after the project had been completed and asked that the applicant, the uh agreement uh be amended to reflect that there was a smaller amount of uh the uh retail and office space uh in the project. And that was something that we took a look at and uh did uh reduce it to make it um uh reflect what the actual build conditions uh in the project, that they weren't in violation of it, but it was amended to correctly reflect what was built at the project.
Thank you.
Okay, so the two thousand and nine changes. Well, you told me I haven't had as much time as I need to say.
I say that at all.
No, you did, you said if I if I if I held off on the stuff that you didn't want me to address.
I never said you have as much time as you want, so.
You did, if you want me to let somebody else speak, but you gotta let me come back, I'm not.
You can come back.
Okay, then let me finish, so um the two thousand and nine change, what was the net result? Uh the the amount of taxes that the developer paid was lower, I believe it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars now, what was it before?
Did you have that answer, Mr. Pat?
The uh the project was originally structured uh with a payment uh based on a two percent of of construction cost. And after uh they completed the building, uh those numbers were advised to reflect uh what the the actual numbers were. It was a reduction, one because there were uh less uh spaces there, but also there's input uh from the the assessors office and so forth as to what comparable uh tax or rental rates and tax rates were on these projects. And uh that was amended in the agreement to uh to reflect that.
Just for everybody's application, Mr. Pat, you tell us, what was the city getting on that property before the Borais developed it as far as tax revenue? Were they, I'm just using arbitrary numbers, was it fifty dollars per block, and now we're getting five hundred thousand? So there's definitely positive there as far as the city gained money, so why, I mean, we always leave that part out, could you?
It was, um, I don't recall if it was exactly zero, but it wasn't much above that, I believe there may have been one or two properties there. Most of it was a uh a parking lot that was not paying taxes.
Correct.
And I don't recall the exact numbers that the the city is getting in now, but it it's several hundred thousand dollars, you know, more than half a million dollars that it's bringing in on that, so it's a substantial increase uh for city revenues uh that the city can use to defray uh other taxes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cradaville, that's it?
Two, two percent of construction cost, what what how, what does that amount to?
I don't know if we have.
Two percent of construction costs amounts to two percent of construction.
Yeah, we don't have the answer.
How how much building cost to build that was built ten years ago, what was two percent of the construction cost?
If you don't have that answer, if you do have the answer, that's right.
It it's not on the total project, it's just on the portion of it that is the the commercial, the the residential portions are taxed under a different formula under the statute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Now, uh I I do have to ask about the ethics matter, you you'd asked me to hold off on on asking about it um until this part, so I'm gonna, I have to ask right now, uh who makes the decision of who the ethics board attorney is?
Mr. Chaney? The city attorney does. The city attorney does.
Mr. Chaney, so is it true that Mr. Chaney has selected Anthony Vaniolo to represent the ethics board in the upcoming matter?
Mr.? This is the last, this is it, this is, would you please answer? A simple answer would be?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay. Uh, do you think it's appropriate for the ethics complaint against you?
My worst mistake is kindness, I'm nice to you, I try to let you talk all you want, and tell me, that's it, you just keep on continuing to talk.
But you're not letting me talk as much as I want, you're telling me to stop talking, sit down. Do you think it's fair for your Little League baseball coach to represent the ethics board when you are the defendant?
Let me, let me, let me clarify, the purposes of, we we, the city attorney's office makes my.
Brother of my baseball coach, that is.
Makes a recommendation.
He's sponsoring the baseball team.
To the ethics board relative to council, it's actually the ethics board that that decides to have that particular individual represent them. And and that's how we hear from Mr. Vaniolo. I know Mr. Cradaville asked some questions of the city earlier, perhaps in the week. I wanted to know why we were flipping back and forth, I think, it wouldn't be appropriate for someone from my office or myself to obviously represent the ethics board when it involves a member of council. And that is exactly why Mr. Hamilton, when he was the city attorney, had selected Mr. Vaniolo in the first instance um on a matter that started last year, I suppose.
Thank you, thank you.
So you were, you were, you were not accurate when you said he was your baseball coach, when I asked about that?
He was the sponsor of my baseball team, it was his brother that was my baseball coach.
Okay, so you've known him since you were a child?
Yes.
And he's gonna represent the ethics board when you're the defendant, is what the city, is what city attorney has decided, is all the attorneys in New Jersey.
Let me just say it again, Mr. Cradaville. I make a recommendation, the city attorney does, the ethics board decides if they wanna go with that recommendation.
Thank you, thank you.
And when will they make that decision?
I'm sorry?
When will they be asked to make that decision?
I assume before they start the next proceeding which involves Mr. Egan, if that's what you're referring to.
Thank you, I have more questions, but I'll let somebody else speak, thank you.
You're done, that's it, you're done.
Yeah, no, I'm done, I'm done.
You're already nice to get in charge of the ethics violation. Hello, Mr. Pittman, how are you?
Be that nice to me?
What's that?
Could be that nice to me?
Absolutely.
I'm a jazz lover, so nineteen oh seven, who was born this day?
Born in nineteen oh seven?
On this day.
On this day? I know I did.
Disney the last week.
Oh, you're serious?
I'm serious.
Wow. I thought you were gonna ask me a black liberal, I'm a black liberation guy. I'm a hip-hop nerd. Tell me where it was cool hurt born, I think. LL Cool J or somebody.
I can't help you, man.
I have a question for you, I have a present today, I'd like to give you. Don't worry, don't have hand trunks on. That there, I want you to read that when you get your chance in Elijah. That right there is the Willie Lynch letter. And um Willie Lynch was a British slave owner from the West Indies who came up with a str- a strategy to keep slaves in order in the early seventeen hundreds. And his strategy and his method that he used in the West Indies became successful in North America. He came up with a strategy that would keep slaves in line from generations to come. So sometimes you'll see black people's demeanor, after you read that letter, you'll understand, even some that's around you. You understand why black people don't get along and some of them back-bite and, you know, they get around white people and their heads down and all of that. All of that explains a lot, the Willie Lynch letter and our demeanor, so I want you to look through that. Then I'll explain to you, I'll give you a brief description after him, Johann Frederick Blumenbach. Now, he was intricate in our situations today. You know, Johann Frederick Blumenbach was the first one, because, you know, in the late seventeen hundreds, uh a lot of the slave owners had problems with slaves, a lot of people think we walk with our heads down and, no, we were rebellious, we fought. And there was a lot of revolts, so they went to Germany to speak to Johann Frederick Blumenbach. And the first thing Johann said was, do your slaves know where they come from? And he said, yes, do the parents educate the slaves, he said, yes, do they still speak in a slave in their original language, he said, yes. He said, well, that's your problem, you can't have African slave knowing they come from Timbuktu greatness. So what you do is, when the slaves get off the boat, you send the parents one direction and you send the children in another direction, so you could sl- so you can raise the children in the manner that you choose to. And that's why we are in the condition today, so if you see gang banging, shooting, that is not no coincidence, it's all strategic. So do, uh but you you do Willie Lynch, then I'll push Johann Frederick Blumenbach on. Okay, all right, um I wanna mention about uh also traffic, on Seaman Street, there's a sign. I mean, there's, I think there needs to be a stop sign, if you're coming from Drift Street, from Haynes Street going towards Joyce Kilmer, there's no stop sign, and if you go up Seaman Street through going towards Livingston Avenue, you can end up crashing, and there's no stop sign in either.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the island, like where it's wide?
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Firehouse, sir? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Steve, I tried to go out there the other day, it's pretty dangerous, sir.
Yeah, it's pretty dangerous.
What happened to your parenting background?
You're referring to the corner of Seaman and Joyce Kilmer in front of the building?
Yeah.
Would that triangulate, sir?
Because I believe there's a stop sign at Seaman and Drift, I believe it's Seaman and Joyce Kilmer away going away from the traction stop sign, so it's something I would imagine you're referring to.
Yeah. Because it's one, like I said, it's one, coming, if you're coming from Livingston, and you hit Drift, I guess it's considered, there's a stop sign.
Right.
And there's a stop sign if you're coming, Seaman going toward Joyce Kilmer.
I just, you're going to that that short section.
Yeah, yeah, kind of, I almost had an accident, yeah. I've been, I've been absent for a few meetings, um honestly, it's because I've been um, I guess, preparing and, you know, getting people involved in ten, ten fifteen, just as well as the Mayhem at March, it was amazing, there was no news coverage, but it was amazing. But even while I was preparing to get people involved with uh the Mayhem at March, I was still doing advocacy work within New Brunswick. If you're not, you know, I'm quite sure you're aware, September, the month of September, there was a lot of shootings within New Brunswick, I mean, like two weeks prior, like six or seven shootings, just back-to-back, you know, daytime, nighttime, the shooting after shooting after shooting. So what I did was I reached out to a group of young men, and um not saying that they were part of any shootings or anything of that nature, but I reached out to young men who had influence in our community. And I, you know, I sat down with them, you know, brought lunch for them, you know, and they're from different areas, and we had a great dialogue. It was amazing, and uh what came out of that was this, and we was, I wanna talk to anybody I can talk to. And what came out of that was this, and you know, I'm gonna talk to anybody I can talk to. Because a lot of times when violence happens, a person that I'm not cool with, probably don't wanna hear, but if I go to somebody, like, "I can talk to such and such and such and such, you talk to such and such and such and such," and then it gets resolved. So, you know, they all agreed to do that. And then overnight, the violence stopped. So, within that meeting, what we did was, we took a picture of solidarity, you know, how excited, let's take a picture. So a picture hits social media. And once it hit social media, almost every young man in that picture was being harassed by the New Brunswick Police Department. Pulled over, running in their cars, just, you know, they're walking down the street, they're checking in, and, you know, just as if they wanted these young men to die. As if, you know, I wanna know does police benefit from street violence? Because, you know, not to mention the fact that, this is alleged, but there's a way we can find out if we just subpoena his phone records. We have a homicide detective that's texting another member of the community who used to be a police officer, but telling him, "Tormell Pittman, you know, I heard about what happened, I heard about the meaning that he had, he needs to mind his fucking business and stay out of shit." I mean, a homicide detective? If you go from having violence every day to all of a sudden it stops because I reached out to a group of young men? You have homicide detective upset with that? And now again, you have the New Brunswick Police Department looking at the picture and harassing everyone in? It makes me think, do they benefit from violence? Because I understand how police operate. I know police don't wanna stop violence. If a person gets shot in the head in Rutgers Village or Dewey Heights, nine times out of 10, they will never get shot again. But they can get shot repeatedly on Winston Avenue, they can get shot repeatedly in Robeson Village, because police job is not to stop violence. Their goal is to contain it and keep it concentrated into one area and make sure it don't spill out. That's their agenda. Their agenda is not to stop the violence. Their agenda is keeping it concentrated into one area. You only get one murder in Rutgers Village, you only get one murder in Dewey Heights. But how can you get repeated murders within the city of New Brunswick? It's because they don't wanna stop violence. But my thing is, why are you making my job harder? I got the hardest job ever, to go to people 19, 20, 21. See, all these programs geared to little kids who don't know any better, five, six, seven, they do. I'll get a program started with the little kids. You give them a little peanut butter and jelly sandwich, sing hello, give them a piece of candy and that's it. But as they get older, the job gets difficult because you're dealing with teenagers who can bat you. And if you're not coming square, you're not coming up front, you're not being truthful, they will tell you they're concerned, they will let you know what's on their mind. So I took the, I took the initiative to address these young men that don't wanna hear it from the violent. Unfortunately, wanna hear it from me. And I had a successful meeting and I stopped violence in the city and the New Brunswick Police Department is counterproductive, but I'd like to know why. Now, the officer who's sending these texts, and this is quote-unquote, this is what I got from someone. His name is Mark Pappas. He's texting another ex-officer saying that he needs to mind his effing business, he needs to stay out of issue, or whatever. All that picture did was tell us who's involved with what, this, that, and the other. All that picture did was hurt them. And he's kinda right, because those guys will get harassed ever since they took the picture. So my question is, why are you guys being counterproductive? Or do you wanna see black men killed?
Pat, let me first say, I mean, not that your allegations are not true.
The subpoena was phone records.
Listen, I'm not saying, and I would feel bad that we would try to suppress someone that's trying to stop violence. And I don't think that the Police Department would wanna do that, and I would hope in my heart that they would wanna do that. Captain Miller, would you like to respond, please?
I'm fully aware of the meeting Mr. Cravill talked about and the picture that was posted on social media. It was out over four weeks ago. And I can say that we know every person that is in that picture and not one person made a complaint to us that they've been harassed.
They're not going to make a complaint.
And additionally, that we had, the first time we heard of any harassment regarding that picture is from Mr. Cravill today, almost five weeks later.
Let me see. This is the thing, right, this is how dangerous it is. Because, like I say, he heard of the meeting, but did you hear of the meeting?
No, sir.
And isn't that sad that the police captain were here for a successful meeting and not even tell you about it? Or tell anyone from the council? I had to come in here and tell you? That's because he didn't want the meeting to be successful. That's proof right there. He would've came and said, "Hey, listen, violence has slowed down, Tormell had a meeting. You guys wanna know about it? If it was something, if it was something negative I did, you guys, all you guys don't know about it? But being it's something positive, you don't have, you have no idea. And if I would've never came to this meeting, you would still have no idea." I'm the truth. I take on the gangbangers and all the people, I can't talk to them if the police are gonna continue to attack them. Now guess what? I had other people lined up to speak to according to their disagreements. But guess what, man, you know, Mel, you put that picture up, man, he's just gonna, man, listen, I'm not sitting down with nobody. It's just gonna make things worse. So the blood is on their hands. The blood is on the city of New Brunswick hands because these young men, the next person that dies, and I'm not gonna stop what I'm doing. I'm good at what I do. I'm good, I'm great at what I do. You can't find nobody in the room that could talk to 20, 21-year-old gangbangers. I sit people in a room who can't stand each other and have complete dialogue and speak like me. Can't nobody do that in this city but me. And if they had the police counteract that, it's embarrassing. You know he got something to do because he didn't even mention that to you, because he hated the meeting. He was mad that that meeting took place, I'm gonna have more meetings. But my problem is, what is, my question is, what is the city gonna do? What is the city gonna do to either you are with me or are against me? It's only two, it's only two things you could be, with me or against me.
I'll speak for my son.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it's commendable that you are arguing something like that and those things are true and you're able to get people not to commit violence, my hat is off to you. But I also have to hear the other side of the story, that what you're saying is true or not true. Now, if somebody was harassed or something like that, why, and I understand what you're gonna say, they ain't gonna go to the Police Department, they're not gonna complain to the Police Department. Captain, so no one came to you and there was no complaints in that?
There were no complaints from anyone in that picture or anyone complaining about the meeting. I can speak personally that I'm not angry that he had to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you, yeah. Are you in favor of, I should say, do you have a problem?
If you can facilitate the end of violence, I'm all for it. I will say, I didn't say the meeting was successful as he put words in my mouth, I said I'm aware of the meeting. I don't know if it was successful or not, I will tell.
Let's get to the bottom of it, successful. In September, how many shootings did we have?
I don't know.
You're a captain, you don't take the shootings seriously?
Mr. Pittman, Mr. Pittman, please, don't worry. He gave you information, why don't we do, why don't we do some, why don't we do some information?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let him off the hook. I'm not, this is serious to me.
I understand.
This is serio... Yeah, no, they scraped my cousin, they scraped my cousin off the concrete.
Let me get you out of there, Pat.
Alright, alright, okay, okay. But listen, a few years ago, they scraped my cousin off the concrete. He got shot on his porch, right in his head. So for me to come out and have meetings and stop roaming, that's not easy. Show me somebody in the city that can do it. And if he's saying, he never said that he was, listen to, he's still, he's still willing. He never said whether he was in favor of the meeting or not. He just said if everyone wanna go on and have meetings, then he can go on.
No, I'm not in favor of the meeting.
I believe I said I am in favor of the meeting, if you can stop violence, I'm all for it.
He did say that. But he doesn't know that he said, you don't know if the meeting was successful. The data or the time to tell if it was successful.
I am a police captain, but I'm not a database, I don't keep statistics in my head, I can't rattle off numbers left and right. I can look them up for you, if you want me to look up numbers for statistics of September. I'll be happy with it, but I can't do it on top of my head.
I'm telling you the meeting was successful there. I'm from, and I'm actually being the city. I'm not just a guy that just floats around. See, that, what I don't, but this is the thing, when I don't go to council meetings, you should be even more scared. You should be even more scared, because I still put in work, my work is not here. My work is, my work is never, this is just a stage, my work is not here. But, but to have, I mean, you have to, for one, I requested you subpoena Mark Pappas's phone records and see the dialogue that he was having with this other person and see what, and see if he, now if he had, if he was upset about this meeting, I don't know why in the world he's gonna continue to be a homicide detective. That's insane, that a homicide detective would want homicides. So that's the first thought, we can do that, we can subpoena Mark Pappas's records. Two, if someone does come up and, which, you can't, you know what? You can't look into it because of Attorney General guidelines, this is a formal complaint. I think you can file a complaint in third person. You are here hearing, you're, you're a captain, so yeah, you can file a complaint.
Thanks, would you like to come down and give us a statement?
I don't have to come down, you hear it right now, this is the statement. This is on public record, follow Attorney General guidelines.
I'm just trying to get him on.
You don't have the experience for what you were saying, you were on number two.
Number, huh?
You were on number two, that was number one, it was number two.
If, number two, if someone was to come up outside of eternal affairs, which are, if police officers are harassing people for non-violence, then what remedy, what method would we take outside of the Police Department? Is there a way that we got, I guess, talk to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office for safety for these young men? Because these young men are getting more targeted from police officers than they were the people that they disagree with.
You do not wanna go to New Brunswick Police Department, tell them, "Fred, you need to go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office."
Could you recommend that these young men, if safely they say, you know what, I'm gonna get the officer that harassed me. I'm gonna find out that, I'm gonna get that officer's name, that poor dog, they check the car. If they get the officer's name, we can, can I march these young men directly into the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office?
I believe the captain said they can go here and file a complaint there.
They're not from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, on the third floor of the building, prosecutor.
This is the problem. I didn't need your assistance, I mean, you guys took it upon yourself to target these young men. I mean, the Police Department took it upon itself to target these young men after the meeting. So now to fix that, to balance that out, I'm gonna need your assistance when I address the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Don't just send me here. I did my work, I did my, I did my job.
What would you like me to do?
I would like you to reach out to Andrew Carey and with assistance from Captain Miller. And you know what we'll do, we'll schedule a sit-down, what I'll do is, I'll reach out to the young man and I'll get more information on the police officers who targeted them. And we'll find out their specific names. And in the meantime, subpoena Mark Pappas's phone records to see the dialogue that he was going back and forth.
We can't do that according to the city attorney, we can't do that.
Can't do it.
Mr. Shami? Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not the city, we're not the prosecutor, I'm not the law enforcement. You know, I know you want me to come, try to come help you, but I can't tell the prosecutor what to do, I don't have you for...
No, I said recommend it.
I, I, I'm telling you right now, if you're not happy to please, I recommend you go into the prosecutor's office.
Alright, well, listen, we'll leave, we'll leave it at this. I know, you know, when it comes to street violence, a lot of, you know, it's like the entire city is up in arms, everyone wants to stop street violence, wanna stop street violence. But when it comes to police corruption, you guys get into a panic. And the reason you guys get into a panic is because not only the police, but the administration is connected to this police corruption. You enable a lot of this corruption. And you're actually risking lives at this point. I love, listen to me, I'm a black liberator, okay? I love black people first and foremost. I'll give my life for my people. There's no compromise, I don't back down, I don't stand back, that's just who I am. And if anybody is affecting blacks, a lot of black lives, then their lives should be affected just as well. Should I, would it be nice to tell them, guys, listen, man, the police that's harassing you, listen, you know what I would do? Everybody gotta get off work at some point in time, follow him around, pop him dead in his head. Shoot him right in his head. You come on, Mr. Pittman? That's not, that's not necessary, but it's okay for, it's okay for you to harass them young men for not popping each other in the head, though.
Mr. Pittman, you said they were harassed, we don't know if that's a fact or not.
I'm telling you...
You're telling, you can tell me at the start that the room is gray, you know, I mean, what you, that this is...
Alright, listen, I have to pick my daughter up for basketball practice, but I'm leaving this. When people come to you with concerns, your job is to investigate them. Don't sit there and say, "I don't know," if it's not in front of you, "I don't know."
Well, we're gonna have, the police are gonna investigate, you see, they're gonna investigate when it was harassed and when you made phone calls like that, we're gonna ask the police department to look at you.
Okay, and also, you know, further, and in the future, I would like for the police to assist me, assist me when I bring young men to stop violence. That'll let them, that'll, that'll, that'll then tell you that they're supported. Because right now, they're upset, they're not, you know, because when you get killed and you get shot, that's overtime for a police officer, and they're kinda upset, then they get in overtime.
Captain, the police department?
Sergeant Gould is in charge of our community outreach program. Suggest you reach out to him, he was more happy to come to you, to get in with us.
Sergeant Gould is one of the police officers that I talk about. He's a real police officer. So do you have anyone else?
Detective Harry Hudson would be next choice.
Well, I'll meet with Harry Hudson first, and then if I feel like he's sincere, then I'll have him sit down with other people. But as of now, the worst, the worst peak, the star of the earth are the Police Department and the City of New Brunswick. Until they change that, they should be embarrassed to put on a uniform that says "The New Brunswick Police Department." Thank you, Mr. Captain.
Thank you.
Lieutenant?
I'm not embarrassed.
Sergeant? You'll never be embarrassed.
Please, sir, thank you.
You'll never be embarrassed, that's your soul.
Thank you, please.
That's your soul, the soul of a devil. I don't expect a devil to be embarrassed.
Anybody else like to address the castles evening? Seen none?
Two members. Councilmember Anderson.